All right, good evening, everyone. It's 7 o'clock and we call the July 9th meeting of the Granby Planning and Zoning Commission for Order. Please stand for pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do a commission check-in. My name is Mark Lafferty. I'm the commission chair, starting from my right.
Maggie Dealey, alternate.
Eric Luttenfield, member.
Eric Myers, vice chair.
Bob Levitt, member.
Steve Muller, member.
Brendan Shaheenan, member.
Commissioner Chinney is not here today and Maggie will be sitting in for her. So, hello. Okay, next on the agenda is public session. Is there items not on the agenda or subject to a public hearing? Would anyone like to come before the commission? Anyone on Zoom today? I don't see anybody on Zoom. Nothing for public session, we'll close public session. Next on the agenda is action on the minutes from the last meeting, June 25th. I was not here, but I did look at the tape. I didn't notice anything, but any comments?
Move to approve the minutes.
Second, we have a motion in a second to approve the minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Abstained?
Abstained.
I will abstain as well. Minutes carried. Next is our public hearings. First is, we have a continuation of a public hearing for applications seeking a one lot subdivision at 200 K Street. This is continued from 611 and 625. It's the applicant and the representative here.
So, you guys have a chance to-
Just for the record, have to introduce yourself again.
Matt Reel, 96 Daniel Trace Burlington. So, again, five acre, one lot subdivision. I think you guys had a chance to look at everything. I think we meet all the regs from what you guys have asked for, so if you guys have any questions.
I did see your staff memo and plans. Have you have any comments from staff side?
So, just real quick, at the last meeting, there are a few outstanding items that had to be addressed. So, one was the placement of the lot square that has been moved back, so it is placed along the required lot frontage, so it's 50 feet back. The frontage calculation was adjusted accordingly, so the table reflects the actual frontage now. And then there was a note added regarding this specific depth of the street scape buffer along K Street. So, those were the outstanding items to be addressed, and the plan does address them.
Is there any further concerns then, because all the comments are addressed from the town engineer and staff?
Right, yep, all comments have been addressed. Noted in the memo is a provision regarding the fee and the open space.
Correct, so the fee will be moved back.
We will take care of that.
And you looked, and it does appear that the rest of the regulations for subdivisions met then?
Correct.
There's nothing else to add then from town side?
No.
Does the commission have any questions?
Nope, there's no questions, right?
Are there anything else to add?
I mean, no, nothing more. I mean, we hope that you guys are happy with our design, and we're trying to make it aesthetically pleasing from the road, and I think we've accomplished that.
Well, it is still an open public hearing, so I will offer, you can come back for your comments, but if there's any member of the public who wishes to speak about this application, please come forward.
My name is Rosemary Powers. I live at 12 Fielding Woods. I am the property of Butter. And I just have a question on the fee in lieu of the open space of $9,600. The 20 acre parcel is being split into the five acre building lot and the 15 acre agricultural use lot. So, if the five acre building lot sells first, before the 15 acre parcel is even subdivided, when does the town require the payment of that fee?
You can go ahead and ask us.
Sure, so, as noted in the staff memo, the fee and the open space will need to be submitted either prior to filing the Mylar, so those are the approved plans, and once those are filed on the land records, the subdivision is finalized, or the applicant can file, or we would prepare and the applicant would file a lien on the property that would get filed on the land records, and the property could not transfer until we receive the payment. So, there are the two options, which is standard for any subdivision application.
So, even before the 15 acre parcel is subdivided, the fee is still required in the event that the five acre lot is sold before the 15 acre subdivision?
The 15 acre lot is not a question here, we're just talking about the five acre. That's the parcel that's in discussion today.
Right.
Nothing to do with the rest of the lot.
Right, so if the 15 acre lot were to be subdivided in the future, that would be a separate application, a different open space payment or dedication would be required at that application. So, the lien would be on the five acre lot. That can't be transferred.
Okay, so that fee is based on the five acre building lot. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Anyone on Zoom? Oh, come on up.
My name is Deb Beal, and I live at 197 Case. I'm right across the street from the property. I just have a question. What is the reason why it's being subdivided? I never really understood why it's being subdivided.
That's not something we answer, that's up to the applicant. You'll have to ask the applicant.
And with the way K Street has their, you know, the special zone, I'm just wondering why it's even considered if it's zoned that way, that you have a certain-
They're reading the regulations. It says subdivision, it's not a rear lot, so.
Okay.
But then-
Okay.
Yeah, so the proposed lot meets all of the requirements for a lot in the R4A zone. So, it needs the acreage requirement, frontage requirement, all the setback requirements to create a lot in that zone.
Okay, and there could be more lots after this?
So, the minimum acreage required in the R4A zone is four acres.
Okay, so it doesn't really matter that there was no subdivision. But maybe I'm confused then, that subdivision is four lots, that's, four lots is considered the building, the required for building. So, if you have 100 acres, you can't, you can subdivide that as many times as you want so long it's four acre parcels?
Based on acreage alone, yes, however, you would need to meet other requirements, like, you know, frontage requirements on the street-
Right, there's special ones on the case.
And there are other provisions that might limit the number of lots based on environmental factors, slope, weapons, things of that nature.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Bill Powers, 12 Fielding Woods. Is there a requirement that the driveway, another driveway be put in other than the road that's going in now?
Abby, I'll just adjust the site plan.
Yeah, so as shown on the subdivision plan for the commission, there is a driveway shown to serve this proposed five acre lot. The apron will have to be paved to meet standards as noted on the plans.
So, before a house is built, there, a second driveway has to be-
There will have to be a driveway to serve that house, yes.
Yep, thank you.
Anyone else?
Hello, I live at 210 K Street. I would just like clarification on what constitutes agricultural land, and what, if any restrictions are there, because I ask the question because Harness Way used to be farmland, and then it wasn't farmland. And this other place here, Station 280, that was farmland, and now it's not farmland. So, what does farmland or agricultural actually mean? Is there any protections under that?
Just briefly answering, although this doesn't have to do with application, but farmland, unless the owner of the property puts it in a conservation, these minutes, land that they can sell, or-
Well, I ask because there's another 15 acres up there that's designated as farmland agricultural. So, there's absolutely no reason why they can't put three more houses in there.
I think they follow regulations, yeah, there's no-
Yeah, so it is, so really, it's a promise until it's not a promise.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Does the applicant have anything they'd like to add? Or you don't have to.
I think we're good.
Okay. If there's nothing else, we'll close the public hearing. Commission has up to 65 days to make its decision, however, we'll be discussing it later on the agenda this evening. Thank you. Thanks, everyone, for your comments. Next on our agenda is applications seeking amendment for regulations in the industrial zone. Vice Chair Myers, could you read the call to hearing?
There will be a public hearing conducted by the D and Z on Tuesday, July 9th, 2024, at 7:00 PM, in the Granby Town Hall Meeting Room, 15 North Granby Road, to hear and consider the following item. An application seeking an amendment to zoning regulation section 3.8 industrial zone to add section 3.8.2.18 for personal services allowed by special permit filed Z-14-24. At the hearing, interested persons may appear and written communications will be received. Copies of the proposals are on file in the community development office.
So, applicant's here for one of us. Introduce yourself and your address, please.
My name's Dea. I'm the property owner of 518 Summit Brook Street. It's Granby Combe Plaza. I have a unit over there. It's in the industrial zone. Previously was Granby Martial Art LLC, but now we want to add a personal service for the usage of the place.
What type of personal services would you be looking?
Right now, it's a massage, fair piece store, or maybe beauty spa store. It depends what the tenant wants to do. We want to just get permission on it. Right now, there is, right now, the store we have over there is Fire Ice, occupant number one, a smoke shop. Also have JD barber shop involving it. This one is Trudin's Rito Game Store. We got office that's rented to Fire Ice. Also, Sims Berry Comics, Scott Games, Mexican Restaurant, and New England Pizza Restaurant right there. So, the number, the one we have right now is in the back over there, is we want to get a special permission to use as personal service.
Abby, it's a question to bring up on the morning. Does a personal service include barber shops, Abby?
Yes.
And there's one there already?
Yes, so some of, I know where that barber shop is, it's historically been used for that, but it's been a tenant there, so it's kind of a unique property in that it's really a shopping center, but it's positioned in the industrial zone, which limits the uses. So, typically, as long as one tenant has swapped in for a similar tenant, they've been grandfathered in, but in this case, the storefront or the space where they're looking to have this personal service was never previously a personal service. So, that's why we thought it would be appropriate to have them apply for a text amendment first.
But they're having personal services in the actual building.
Yes, yeah, different storefronts.
Okay. Is there any staff comments or concerns?
No, no, so just noting again, this would be a new special permit in the industrial zone. It could include barber shops, beauty salons, tailoring establishments, and other similar operations. So, certainly something like a spa or massage there. The center would have to come back to the commission for approval if the commission approves the text amendment.
Does the commission have any questions?
No, I don't have any questions.
They just answered everything. It's precedent, so. I don't have, do you have anything else to add before we open up?
I don't much to see, so just to file the paperwork.
Okay. See if there's any other comments, and we get the last word of them.
Okay.
If anyone wishes to speak on this application, please come forward. Still don't see anybody on Zoom. So, that being said, if there's no other commission questions, no staff questions, we will close the public hearing. Commission has up to 65 days to make the decision, however, we'll be discussing it later on the agenda. Thank you. Hey, next on our agenda is applications seeking a site plan modification for outdoor dining in the center zone, center commercial zone. Could you read your call, please?
There will be a public hearing conducted by the D and Z on Tuesday, July 9th, 2024, at 7:00 PM, in the Granby Town Hall Meeting Room, 15 North Granby Road, to hear and consider the following item. Application seeking a site plan modification under zoning regulation 8.16.10 for outdoor dining for property located at 4 Park Place, Grassroots, COCE Zone, filed Z-17-24. At the hearing, interested persons may appear and written communications will be received. Copies of the proposals are on file in the community development office.
Is there applicant or representative here?
My name's Mark Sproll, representing Grassroots. I live in Richfield.
Just want to explain a little bit, we have a backup, just-
Yeah, and my drawing-
Let us know what you're looking to do.
Yeah, my drawing is awesome, so I apologize. We are looking just to expand some of our outdoor seating through the building, and we put some picnic tables out back. So, right now, we have a small area of outdoor seating. This would expand it modestly. We'd probably put three or four picnic tables in that backside area. We've removed some of the trees that were there from last year. That's about it.
I see you have gravel there, it's already declared?
That was from last summer.
With the freezer?
Yeah, and we moved, and we moved, and you could sort of see it, but there had been trees that we had planted there for your request, and we moved those to the property line to separate us from the backside of the shopping center.
The dimensions are here, it'll be somewhat to a 40 foot conix.
Yeah, that made it somewhat fortuitous, and since it was already leveled and gravel, effectively gravel, it was kind of seemed like it worked well. Yes, like I'm going to term.
So, how many tables would you add in there?
Max four.
It's just for people to serve, there's not going to be any-
No outdoor-
Entertainment or-
Yeah, sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, but yes, to your answer, there will be no outdoor, sort of, we're not planning to use it or have any intention of approvals for outdoor entertaining. There's speakers outside already, but they're not, they're above the building, so it won't be, and there's no lighting that's going in, other than the existing lighting from the parking lot at the place.
Is this going to be self-serve?
Sorry?
Wait, you're going to waitstaff out here, or is this going to be self-serve?
Uh, similar, probably similar to what we do currently, so we don't waitstaff per se, so for anyone who doesn't know, we will deliver food for people who are staying, but it's not waiting tables. And there'll be garbage cans labeled where there'd be a little bit of that sort of-
Yeah, that's one thing, I didn't, I mean, it's not, is there a site plan for this location, like a prepared one, Abby?
Yes, we do have a site plan, however, it doesn't, some changes were made to it, the actual site, which aren't reflected on the site plan, so that's why, to fulfill the requirement, showing it to scale, we use the aerial imagery, but you could certainly, or that could be noted on the site plan, but just understanding that then the existing patio isn't exactly what's there, if that makes sense.
I just, from a consistency standpoint, especially for commercial, if there is a engineered site plan, I'd like to have those better than a Google map for, I don't know if the commission agrees.
Yeah, I think it's just that they got it done better.
Is that something you could update on your engineered site plan in the town?
I guess we can look into it. I think the engineered site plans that are there from the last renovation that was prior to ownership, and whatever plans were approved, the actual patio is different.
I've said, if the commission were to approve this, would you be open to updating those? If the approval was up to update your plans to the current conditions, would that be, I guess, something probably required anyway, right?
Yeah, we could have it drawn to scale on the existing site plan, and then look at it. If the commission is in agreement, just showing the existing patio, just modifying it on the old site plan to show what it is, yeah, so.
Okay, yeah, we obviously work with it.
And this isn't a new area with the barn and the parking lot modifications?
No.
This is beyond that part?
Correct, yeah, yeah. Is there going to be any connectivity between the current outdoor seating, the existing and the new? Could there be any sort of path, or just the grass in between?
Yeah, right now, there's just the grass. There is a little bit of like, so what the landscaper did just to make it not, when you pulled the trees out, and you can see in the photos, there's the mulch and whatnot, he created a little bit of like a walkway gap, if you will, in the mulch. I don't think, for right now, we hadn't planned on putting any sort of pathway from the grass to the other patio, but obviously we needed to, if there was a problem.
I know staff comments, you asked the question, will the tables remain on-site, and if so, where will they be stored?
Yeah, so similar to our existing outdoor seating, it doesn't remain on-site all year, and so the expectation is that we do similar thing with those, restore those in the building.
Okay.
It kind of, you know, I don't know if that actually, don't know if Mary actually asked. Sometimes you're better off not asking, I guess, but I don't know if there's a cutoff as to when we need to remove those, but we tend to do it seasonally like everybody else, so get to the end of October meeting or whenever. We'll pull those inside, just to, for our own sanity.
Another staff comment was the litter control plan, Abby?
Mm-hmm.
Do we need to have, if he's updating his showing receptacles, we need something for that?
Yeah, it could be noted on the plan, yep, the trash receptacle, yeah.
And we, not for this part, like, but sort of, because there is a little bit of trash element in the handles these days, so we've definitely, we've increased our trash removal this time of year. So, we're going twice a week, so it should be materially reduced, the amount of trash on-site, but for those outdoor receptacles, it'd be similar to our existing outdoors, so every one of those is cleaned out and put into the dumpster every night, so it won't be sitting in those cans, or if it is, somebody's going to be in a lot of trouble.
I just want to add to the plan, because this may have hurt, this approval's not just for you. If you decide you win the lottery tomorrow and want to sell it, we just have to think about the future, too, that somebody may be not as thoughtful as you are.
Do you think all of your outdoor seating would be completed by, say, November 15?
Ignoring any additional requirements that you may put in place, the outdoor seating could be completed very quickly.
No, I'm sorry, I mean, rephrase, for the removal of furniture for winter storage, when do you think you would be done with seating outside?
I mean, I can't remember when we pulled it out last year, but, you know, it gets cold and raining in the middle of October, and we pulled it, I'm almost guaranteed we pulled it by, I don't mean the latest, but-
November 1st?
Yeah.
15th, 15th, in case we have an Indian-
Yeah, I mean, we obviously are biased, and we like to let people set aside as long as possible. But we're going to ruin if we leave it out too long, so, so I don't want that.
Is there any other comments, Abby, that you didn't address on your-
No, that's everything.
Is your other, I did look today, is your other freezer that was out front, is that still there?
It is.
Is there, that's not, we talked about the freezer last time you had it back, it's not part of this application, but we're looking at the entire site for compliance.
Yeah, so we moved a mobile freezer out front, partly because when we headed it back, we actually got robbed last winter, because it's not a camera further away, so.
Can you speak up a little bit?
Sorry, we had moved the mobile freezer trailer that was in the back to our front that's on our cameras, because we got robbed there last year. So, we lost a fair amount of materials, including some equipment with the trailers, but also with the, we lost two, two generators, so it was awful, so it was good time. So, we moved it to the front because it's actually under our camera, but it's a mobile trailer that's around. I think Abby had actually mentioned the other truck, which is just a delivery van, tend to park it out front. I don't know if that's a problem, maybe I should think I was wrong, but maybe it's-
I was just looking more, and since we had given a temporary freezer now, you're kind of out front, and that's not part of the site plan. I know that's, it's a rental trailer, it looks like it's licensed, right? There's license plate on it?
Yep.
But it's hooked up, you have some pretty decent pattern going into it.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean, it's, it's hooked up to our generator, to our power, whatever, system, I don't know the exact term, to our surge brake, surge protector, but I don't know.
How long do you anticipate that's going to be there?
It's in July, month.
Any opportunities to increase your security camera in the back and move some of that stuff under the back?
Yeah, part of it, it was in the farther part, I guess, if you know the parking lot, off towards the, where our dumpster is. I don't know if that's capable. It's a pretty impressive, it was on camera, but they came flying in in the dark, and people jumped through bushes, and three cars came in and three cars came out, so.
Wonder if it'll be-
That's pretty awesome.
Once the construction's done for the barn, I wonder if it'll be visible, more light and all that sort of stuff in that, in that area. I mean, not because that's not part of the barn. It's not, well, but we can open up the whole backside. We had dark skylight from behind. Oh, that's right. Dark skylight, yep, oops. The only reason I bring it up is in, that's, if it's just the trailer, but you have it kind of more permanent with that power hooked up, and I had spoken to Abby a little bit beforehand, because it didn't really discuss that as part of the site, so it's going to be gone in July, but we'll talk about it when we have our permission discussion. It's not part of your application tonight, but we have to make sure your site's in compliance when we do other permits, is that correct, Abby?
Yeah, that's fair.
Okay. Any other commission questions? Anything else? Debbie?
No.
Well, appeared to be a sentence.
No, yeah.
Is any members of the public wish to speak in this application? Anyone on Zoom? Still don't see anybody. Anything else said before we close, Abby? If there's nothing else, we will close the public hearing. Commission has up to 65 days to make its decision, but we will be discussing it shortly. Thank you. Okay, next item seven is receive any applications and schedule public hearings. I did not see any received by the agenda. Abby, has anything come in since?
No, nothing.
Okay. With that, if we don't, if we don't have any continued items from tonight, do we have anything then for the next meeting?
No.
Okay, so if we don't have anything scheduled, we can probably cancel that meeting then?
Yeah.
Okay, and then we were, we have August- And then we were, we have August recess?
Yes.
So, so the intent, unless something comes up that needs commission action, if the Commission's okay, we can cancel the next meeting then?
Okay.
Yep, sure. I mean, if something comes up, we'll adjust it, but, if an application comes in, we store it within the statutory deadlines, correct?
Yep.
Okay. Next is considerate applications where the Commission has concluded the hearing. We've concluded three hearings tonight. Start off with the first one on the one-lot subdivision on 200 K Street. Commission discussion?
Nope.
Okay, Abby.
I think the applicant spent a lot of time and has met the regulations. The site or the subdivision plan meets the regulations now. I think, I think there's no other comments, take a motion.
A motion, we approve the application as drafted in the memorandum for the Kenyon, Kenyon, July 2nd, 2024. Sure. Move that we approve the application seeking a one-lot subdivision for lot 1-20-66-37-2, to be known as 200 K Street, property adjacent to 186 K Street to the south, R4A Zone. The applicant shall pay a fee in lieu of space as outlined within subdivision regulation 3.1.3 as proposed. Prior to the filing of the milers, the applicant shall either submit a fee in lieu of the open space to the town or file a document that requires a payment of a fee in lieu of open space at the time such as the lot is sold, the fee in lieu of open space is $9,600.
For a second?
Second.
And we have a motion to second to approve the application. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Next is, was an application for a amendment to the zoning regulations in the industrial zone to allow personal services. I don't see any issue with the fact that location is more commercial zone than industrial zone, and there's already personal services and other retail-type uses that are in there. In fact, that might be someday more appropriate for a commercial zone, but it's probably one lot, I don't want to get in the spots on it, so. I don't see any issues with it.
I don't see any issues, there's a precedent for these types of uses there, and it is, it is a strip mall in an industrial zone, so I'm open to increasing the uses.
Okay, if an application came in for a massage parlor, they would have to come in front of us again, correct?
That's right.
And we could explore the bona fides of whether it really was a massage parlor?
Correct, yes. If the Commission approves the special permit, or this amendment, any personal service would come before you for special permit approval, so details would have to be provided about the business operation.
Okay, this, there was an applicant several years ago, just to let you know, and there's a whole state licensing, is it state licensing or?
Yes.
Approval process that's very robust.
And we did approve that application after putting them through their cases, they actually never did open.
They didn't get the state approval, I don't think.
Oh, because we approved the application and they didn't get the state.
Okay.
But should be noted that the application runs with the property, so there is actually approved use on a property for personal services in town.
Hey, if there's no other comments, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the application seeking an amendment to the zoning regulations, section 3.8 Industrial Zone, to add section 3.8.2.18 for personal services allowed by special permit, File Z-14-24.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor is a motion?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion passes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
A note in the memo from our staff, it says that we have to state on the record that it's consistency with the Plan of Conservation and Development. Last page of the memo, it says the proposed change is consistent with several goals outlined in the Plan of Conservation and Development, including providing opportunities for new commercial development, increasing opportunities for employment within the town, and increasing the availability of local commercial services. So I think we ought to have that as.
Without objection, we'll put that on the record, that we find that it's, means Plan of Conservation and Development. Thank you, Chair. Okay, last, we had an application seeking a site plan modification for outdoor dining at 4 Park Place for Grassroots. I think my concerns were brought up, which is to have the formal site plan modified. It, I think in the long run, we require commercial developers especially to do these, we do waive them in residential, but they are a guide for the town. And start running a lot of stuff off Google Earth becomes confusing to people in the future, so I would support that modification. The other is, I think we just, Abby, this is what brought up to the applicant, it's not part of this application, but to make sure the site is in conformance with, if there's a trailer out front. I know it's registered in parking lot, but it is physically connected by some electricity, so I don't know if you want to comment on that?
Yeah, so that's something, I think, it's come up during the Granby Center Committee meetings as well, and I think during the walkabout that the committee had. Even just drive around the center, you'll notice that there are food trucks and other trailers parked in commercial properties. I think to a certain extent, it's acceptable, you know, it's accessory to the business, they're typically parked to the rear. I do think it's a little bit different when a trailer or vehicle is plugged in and it's being used more as part of an extension of the business to a certain extent. So that might be something that we'd want to consider or talk about further to figure out how to treat those. Because it essentially does become outdoor storage, at least in my opinion at that point, as opposed to just a vehicle parked that's part of the business. Those are just my thoughts.
Maybe that's something the Center Study Committee, like, addresses, something to bring forward as a proposed modification to some existing regs?
Well, I would, my, my opinion is that since it is attached, and we did have a vote on a similar trailer out back, that this current trailer is not approved under our current regulations.
Right.
But with it registered, it on wheels, we.
It's physically attached with two-phase power, certain, I don't know if we'd say this, it's hardwired to the building, so.
I think that's the good reason to have the site plan updated, to show that that is not part of this application, that's, you know, that is not something that's allowed for this piece of property. That's a good reason why we should have it.
May I respect the business owner, he had a theft, and he's trying to address that, but just thinking, you know, that's on the green, and can we approve the application if there's a lack of conformity on it? Or put in there, subject to having it removed at the?
I would think I would prefer to treat it as a zoning violation, to be honest, and pursue it through that channel, either, you know, a cease and desist or look at fines. It does sound like it will be removed relatively soon, so I'm confident that we won't have to get to that point.
That's fine, I take the applicant for his word, you know, that he doesn't want it there. But again, I just wouldn't want to have a, my view is this Commission is not, not agreeing that that is inconformity, the way it's set up. I agree with you, Commissioner Myers, if it was just sitting down like a truck parked, Google registered plate in a parking lot, different, but and what I think, maybe here on the Center Study Committee, it's over the review, so we can look at what we want to do for that type of reform in the future.
Okay. My memory of when we approved the trailer in the rear was there was a discussion that they were looking at buying a new facility and not, you know, need this in the future. And I do know they've opened another store, and seems we're going to think, so, you know, I don't know, you know, how, how long we're going to have to keep using this.
Yeah, yeah. Well, can, just wanted to get that on, on the table, on the record, and then if we want to, so on plan, I would want to have, suggest that we have the site plan modified along with the litter control plan. Is there anything else, Abby, you want to note?
I had taken a few notes here. Updated site plan, litter control plan, designation of trash receptacles on the site plan, and outdoor seating stored inside or off-site at the end of the season, no later than November 15.
Okay. Okay, I will entertain it, if there's no further discussion, we'll entertain a motion.
Propose a motion, we approve an application seeking a site plan modification under zoning regulation 8.16.10 for outdoor dining for property located at 4 Park Place, Grassroots. Issuance of the site plan modification is contingent upon the updated site plans filed with the final permit paperwork. Applicant will include a litter plan with the final application and will designate the location of trash receptacles on the site plan. All outdoor seating to be stored inside or off-site at the end of the season, no later than November 15.
Have a second?
Second.
You have a motion second to approve the application as read, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Abby, anything from town side, staff side?
So one thing to report, I was out at 18 Mill Palm Drive today for a final site inspection, they are looking for their COs. This is the Garden Landscaping Center at the end of Mill Palm for Greenway Village Apartments. So that site looks, it's in really good shape, they did a good job in installing all the landscaping, there's just a few outstanding items that they'll have to bond for, before getting their CO, but it's progressing nicely. That's it.
Any commissioner reports?
On that note, next to that building, the other landscaping business there.
Yes.
They're bringing the, their grass clipping pile.
Yes.
Is coming on-site, and it's growing.
Yes.
And that is something that is not allowed, you know, to bring.
Correct.
So, I mean, it just keeps growing, and it's going to become odorous, you have all the apartments out back and all the businesses around there.
Yes, yep, we've been in touch with the town attorney about that site.
All right.
Do we hear anything about the solar farm?
Um, so we've been having bi-weekly check-ins with them. So they've, they're in the process of doing more environmental studies and work on that property. So it's my understanding that their timeline has been pushed back a little bit for submission to the Citing Council, but they are making progress.
That same part of town, is there anything, any further, I think there was a second walkthrough of the Old Freshies?
Yes, yes, we did have a second walkthrough of that property. Proposals are due tomorrow at 3:00, so we'll see what kind of responses we get. I'm optimistic we have at least two coming in, hopefully. But yeah, we'll be reviewing that and again, getting a reverse support slot then.
So I offered too, that I had corresponded with Abby, that at the last meeting, we had approved, after some good discussion, the Julian's Parking Lot Expansion. They moved extremely swiftly and got that done, I've written in days after approval of the, of the permit, and it's in use. Although on Sunday, there was still street parking taking place, and the parking lot was not in use. It was, well, there were two cars in it, and I had sent the picture to Abby and asked her to work with the applicant to honor the spirit of the applicant, which was do not park on Barnborough Hills Road, which is dangerous, and get some signage or other barriers up in place to encourage people to park where they're supposed to.
Yes, and I did hear back from the owners today, actually, they have ordered sandwich board signs, and he said they anticipate that they're going to come in tomorrow, hopefully. And if not, definitely by the weekend, so they'll have some additional signage, temporary signage out to drag people, that that new parking area is now available.
I'll have a pastry and check it out.
Anything else? Then as we talked before, we, unless something comes in between now and then, there will not be a meeting for our next scheduled meeting, then we're in August recess. So you guys had a nice break, so we'll be back till September. Okay?
Thank you.
So if there's nothing further, we'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
You have a motion second adjourned, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, we are adjourned.